is also familiar with the township. They've worked with the township in the past. And the contract that was part of this engagement has been reviewed by G M H. And we're just finalizing the terms and conditions for that engagement and populating the contract with the information from, for M D I S if they are approved for this engagement. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Was this the lowest bid or the best bid?
I would say it was the best bid. There were some highs and lows on each bid category, but after Guide Post vetted them out on the overall scope of the work, it pretty much came in line with the budget expectation for this project.
Did everybody bid the whole package?
No.
Were there some that just bid our portions of it?
There were some partial bids. M D I S was the only contractor that bid all five categories.
Thank you.
Treasure Cab.
Teresa? Yes.
No, okay.
Since we're talking about M D I S, which houses all the cameras in the township, has the camera system for Claude Allison in the parks and for the community center, has it improved?
Yes, actually.
And what the rate of improvement would be?
Yep, so actually, I was talking to Director Bonnerick the other day about this as well. Since we have the new engagement with them, they have been on top of things. They actually come into the community center if I don't notice that something's down or if they need to check on a system, they go and weekly monitor all of these systems. So I have no issues with that now. The only cameras that we're seeing an issue is not because of anything with them. We had to fix a couple of things, so.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board? Hearing other questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the Recreation and Wellness Center low voltage bid packages to M D I S for security access, control, security surveillance, security intrusion detection, audio, visual, and telecommunications infrastructure.
We need to add in there that subject to final legal counsel review and approval.
So it was done?
It was already done.
It was done?
Yes.
Okay, so that's already been done? Okay, then we don't need to do that.
Support.
Okay, the move is supported. Roll call vote.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Next, we have item number two, the approval of G M P.
Okay. In front of you is a large packet, and this is the approval of the G M P, which is the amendment award for Frank Riewall and Sons. Actually, Kurt Rider and Adam Gutter here today as well. I just want to first say that the process that we had gone through to get to this, the two of the gentlemen specifically, Kurt has done a lot of work, and I'm extremely impressed with everything that they have done and gone through in such a short amount of time as well. So, you know, first, thank you to your company and the two of you for the guidance in this whole process. So this is going to be, it's going to be subject to attorney approval. The majority of it has already been looked at by our township legal, but we do have a couple of tweaks and dates that we just need to make sure are in alignment. So when you do make the motion for these, if that's what your pleasure is of the board, please just make sure that you keep in the legal review. And I'm going to turn this over once again to Robert.
So this approval has been a long time coming, in the works with a lot of members on our team. And hats off to ReWALL for putting together the bid documents and everything else that was involved for finally putting together the G M P and getting to this date in time. So just a little background, the construction documents were issued for bid and were completed by H E D Architects, the architect on the Recreation and Wellness Center, on February 16th of this year. Forty-one bid categories were created to gain good bid participation. And this is something that ReWALL does with their projects, is they break it down into smaller pieces. So it allows for trades to have the ability to bid on multiple bid categories or, you know, smaller bid categories, if you will, for the project. By doing so, they received 150 bids on this project on March 24th. These bids were read out loud publicly and tabulated, after which there were some post-bid interviews that we went through to vet out the lowest qualified bidders. Just something important to note is the bid coverage again. Like I mentioned, 150 bids that were received. In one bid category for, let's say, H V A C, we received nine bidders, which is almost unheard of. Electrical had eight, structural had five, and most bid categories would, I would say there was about four bidders in each bid category. And about 85% of the bids were at or below budget. The award recommendation tonight is for $15,391,644 plus an owner control contingency of $1,540,000 totaling $16,931,644. And this is within the board approved $21.5 million budget for this project. If the board recommends the G M P this evening, the next steps would be to finalize the G M P contract, which has already been reviewed by G M H on 4/7 of this year, of this month, just Sunday. So he was doing some overtime work, I think, reviewing the contract. We'll finalize the township held contract. There's one township held contract that is necessary for this project since ReWALL is signatory to this particular trade, which is the mason trade. And that's the next approval, item number three, that we'll talk about. And ReWALL will formalize the contracts with all the selected subcontractors, and then mobilization will occur to start with probably a ground break in May, and we'll get underway. So, if there's any questions?
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasure Cab.
Okay, so I just want to try to understand on page 10 from the first page that was sent out, I know that you just stated that on number three would be the Alba Masonry?
Correct.
So in the page 10, it was backed out because the owner held the contract. So how does that fit in with the total amount as opposed to number three?
So the total amount of the G M P award would include that contract because ReWALL will be managing that particular trade. But we separated out the dollar amount, the 1.8 million, so that it's identified that this is something that the township will hold on the side, the contract for that engagement. But we included it in the G M P because they're managing that work.
Okay. All right. We'll get into deep dive on number three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Just a quick clarification.
Go ahead.
On the, the agenda, it says 5:44. It's actually 6:44 at the end.
Okay.
Okay, 6:44.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on this particular? Hearing on, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the G M P Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Award for Frank Riewall, ReWALL in Sons per the attached letter, including the owner control contingency amount totaling $16,931,644 pending township legal review.
Do you have support on that or no?
Support.
Okay, support by Trustee Jackson. Discussion.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Please, we received the legal review on Sunday from Steve Bitchcock.
Right.
This came after the agenda was drafted, but we did receive it.
Well, I believe that Trust, folks said there's still a couple of things in meeting to be ironed out, and that's why it says pending township legal review. Is that correct?
Correct. There's a couple of dates in there we just want to clarify on if we need to have them changed, but we have to, we were waiting for that specific question to come through to ask them specifically. That makes sense. We just want to make sure we have legal review because if it needs to be changed, we want it to happen.
Yep. So the motion on the floor is approved. Approval of the G M P General Guarantee Maximum Price Amendment awarded for Frank Riewall and Son, award per the attached letter, including the owner control contingency amount of $16,931,644 pending township legal review. Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy's absent. Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. So, Robert, or Director Stokes?
Okay.
It's going on number three.
Item number three? Yes, please. On the agenda. So this is the approval of the owner held contract, which is, the company's name is Alba Masonry Stone and Tile. Like I mentioned before, this is a engagement for a trade that ReWALL is signatory to. So they cannot hold the contract because they're signatory to the union for this particular trade item and that particular dollar amount, I believe, in the recommendation letter. Let's just read it off the screen, is $1,896,650.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
This would be for number two and three. Are these amounts subject to change orders?
Every trade is subject to trade orders, but we have contingency to cover any trade. There's always going to be something that will occur during the project. That's why we have an owner control contingency to help for those change orders that may occur. A lot of the change orders are typically unforeseen conditions, missing work scope items and things like that, but we do have a contingency to take care of those items.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing on, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee King.
I move approval to, I move approval to award and allow the township to hold the contract for Alba Masonry, Masonry, Stone, and Tile in the amount of $1,896, 1,800, And for Frank Riewall and Sons to be responsible for the management of this trade pending township legal review.
Support.
Supported by Treasure Cab. Motion is on the floor to approve the, to approve award of, and allow the township to hold the contract, Alba Masonry, Stone, and Tile in the amount of $1,896,650 for Frank Riewall and Sons to be responsible for the management of this trade pending township legal review. Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. And thank you to the team that's worked so hard to get this put together so we can break some ground and build a building. So thank you all. Director Stokes.
Okay. The next item on your agenda is the approval of the contract for Smart Park and Ride. Currently, the park and ride is being held at Western Grand. So basically, what we're looking to do is transfer this over to Claude Allison Park. Myself and Director Dennis have been speaking with Smart. They already currently have a bus stop down there. It's just authorizing them to be able to, anyone that's coming down there to utilize that, that they'll be able to park there. So we also found that we needed to update the contract anyway and sign a new one. So this would be in replacement of basically moving the park and ride from Western down to Claude Allison Park. And the Park Commission has also voted on this and has approved this as well.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
Absolutely. How many spaces are we talking?
So they don't specifically put spaces in there, but there's only been about three to four cars that ever used the Western.
Okay. And I'm assuming that they're going to let them know as far as notification and everything?
Correct, yep. As of April 22nd, they'll be transferring everything down there. And I just told them that we would let them know pending tonight's board meeting if it was approved or not, so then they can formally inform everyone.
Okay. And just as a comment, I think it'd be safer as well because you would see them crossing the beach daily, anytime they park over there or when they're coming home. So I think it'd be a lot safer over Claude Allison anyway.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? So I guess the only other thing is that the agreement starts on the 22nd of April and runs through the 21st, 2034.
Correct. To the Chair.
Trustee.
I move that we approve the contract, Smart Park and Ride, Claude Allison Park, from April 22, 2024 through April 21, 2034. Support.
Okay, the move is supported. Discussion. Okay, so the motion.
Is that a 10-year contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is approved, the contract with Smart Park and Ride at Claude Allison Park, starting April 22, 2024, to run through April 21, 2034. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King.
Was the previous contract a 10-year contract?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing on, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Director Stokes?
My last one on the agenda tonight is the approval to purchase one piece of equipment for Glenhurst Golf Course through Revel's Turf and Tractor. They are looking to purchase a John Deere 405, 405-2R compact utility tractor. This one will replace a current tractor that is, is at its end of its life cycle. So myself and Director Bonnerick had been working with Glenhurst on forecasting out the equipment that they would need in the next several years. They redid based on the needs of the equipment that's currently there. So if you notice in the budget, it said a Greensmaster. They have pushed that Greensmaster back to next year and are asking for the tractor this year. So price is very similar from previous, so they're just asking to push this up.
Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King.
What will become of the previous used tractor?
So we are actually going to keep it right now. They had an offer to trade that in, I believe it was for under $3,000 to the current, to this current vendor. So I asked them to hold off on that because if it's still able to be utilized, we might be able to utilize it in another department. And if not, we have other means that we can also see about trade in to make sure that we're getting the best value.
Thank you.
To the Chair.
Treasure Cab.
Teresa, where are they currently housed?
Down at the golf course. They have the Turf Care Center, which is closest to the Speedway Gas Station. That's where they house all of that equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing on, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move to approve the contract, I'm sorry, move to approve the purchase of one John Deere 405-2R compact utility tractor, 40 PTO horsepower for Glenhurst Golf Course through Revel's Turf and Tractor for $48,834.75 to be paid out of 2024-2025 budget number 584.
Now, would be 45,000, not 48,000, correct?
45,000.
45.
Yes, correct.
We have a second.
Support.
Perfect. Trustee King. The motion is to approve the purchase of one John Deere 405-2R compact utility trailer, 40 PTO HP for Glenhurst Golf Course through Revel's Turf and Tractor for $45,834.75 to be paid out of 2024-2025 budget number 584. Any other questions? Roll call, oh, sorry. Treasure Cab.
Just roughly, how long did the last one last?
Prior to my time, probably. So, I mean, it's been a while.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I did want to note, too, that this is off the state bid list, so that's a competitive pricing off the state bid list.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy's absent. Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Director Stokes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
I think you're up for the next few.
I am, thank you, sir. Board, good evening again. John Clark, Labor Counsel. So before you are items six through 10, which are in essence identical items, but I want to address them generally for the audience as an edification. The board and its continued commitment to its employees, or to retain its employees, have directed Finance, Supervisor, H R, and Legal to negotiate letters of agreement with the four bargaining groups to fund the employees' health savings account for 2024 only at this point in time. Little history, sometime, or in the last contract round, the contract, the township negotiated to stop funding the annual HSAs. However, because of ongoing issues, because of increased costs in healthcare and other things, the township board and its commitment to its employees wanted to fund those HSAs for 2024 only, with the fact that contracts are coming up this year and next year. So we did meet with the unions and we put together the HSAs. And in essence, what they provide for is that the township will fund 80% of the annual HSA for single coverage and for two-family person. The reason it's 80% is because the township is currently, the employees are currently paying 20% of the premium, annual premium, the township's paying 80%. So logic has it that the township would fund 80% of the HSA. So the amounts that will be contributed per employee for single coverage is $1,280. And for two-person and family coverage, it's $2,560. And again, before you are four letters of agreement with the Command, Patrol, I F F, and MATE. And also before you is the approval of a resolution to have the same funding commitment for a non-union staff in accordance with the MATE contract. And these LOAs lay out the specifics of what has to be done, all the mechanics. But these have been reviewed and approved and accepted by the unions. And so with the board's approval tonight, these can be executed and the dollars can be transferred into those HSA accounts. So we're looking for really five separate motions, one for each of the bargaining groups and then one for the non-union.
Yep.
To the Chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
When would they be loaded? Or when would they be? Sure.
Thank you, Treasure Kavanaugh, yes.
There you are.
I get an opportunity to speak. I told you I'd find a way, Supervisor McCray.
Yes, there's always.
They should be loaded, I would say, they'll be loaded for sure by April 30th, but I would think probably sometime next week.
Okay, thank you.
And I will be sending out a communication to all of the staff with directions on what they need to do to comply with this document.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing no other questions. We have to do these one at a time, so.
To the Chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the LOA for 2024 employer, employer HSA contributions with COAM. Support.
Court, move is supported. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy? Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Keep going.
Number seven.
To the Chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the LOA for 2024 employer HSA contributions for POAM or with POAM. Support.
Supported by Trustee Taylor. So the motion is approved of approval of LOA for 2024 employer HSA contributions for POAM. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Number eight.
To the Chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
Approval of the LOA for 2024 employer HSA contributions with I A F F. Support.
Supported by Trustee Taylor. So it's approval of the LOA for 2024 employer HSA contributions for I A F F. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Number nine.
To the Chair.
Trustee, Treasure Kavanaugh.
I moved.
Don't put in for a minute.
I move to approve the LOA for 2024 employer HSA contributions with MATE. Support.
Supported by Trustee Taylor. Motion is approved. Approval of the LOA for 2024 employer HSA contributions with MATE. Roll call vote.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Number 10.
To the Chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the 2024 employer HSA contributions for appointed and non-represented employees in the same fashion as is set forth in the companion MATE LOA. Support.
Supported by Trustee Taylor. Okay, so the motion is to approval of the 2024 employer HSA contributions for appointed and non-represented employees in the same fashion as is set forth in the companion MATE LOA. Roll call vote.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Number?
Thank you.
Okay. Director Bonnerick, I guess this is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, for item number 11. So this is the, a resolution before the board to extend the current police and fire operating millage for the years of 2026 through 2045. Your packet included a memo from our legal counsel, Anthony Chubb, and I believe that you were also sent the resolution that goes along with this yesterday. And so this millage has been in place by the voters since 1986. And so this has been a very longstanding millage and is approved for 20 years at a time. And so we are simply asking that it be placed on the August ballot for consideration by the people of Redford Township to renew this operating millage and to reset it back to its original 1.5 mills. Currently, this provides for us approximately $1.6 million of funds for police and fire operations. If this millage were not to be renewed, we would have to roll that into the S A D, which would bring us probably close to maxing out the S A D millage.
To the Chair.
Treasure Cab.
Adam, who writes the language for what goes on the ballot?
I... I think clerk may be the better person to answer that question. I'm not clear, just because it's the first time I've had one of these, um, is the language that Anthony Chubb suggested. That's, and that is what the language will be.
It's originally written by legal counsel.
So, that will...
Since this is a renewal, I think that our present legal counsel did a little, uh, updating on it, you know, changed the dates. But it's, it is written by our lawyers.
And he did have the resolution from twenty years ago to use as a guide for writing this.
It's a resolution, for some reason...
Yes.
Yeah, I did, the lang- I didn't get it printed.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is. It's right there.
I didn't get it.
Sorry, it's not in my packet, so I'm looking on my phone.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Adam, when you said it's a rollback to one-point-five, what's it currently at now?
Through the, how did they roll back over the last twenty years? It has been reduced from one-point-five down to one-point-one. So, it would allow it to be reset to one-point-five, um, which then in turn should mean that the SAD will probably come down by the corresponding amount.
Perfect, okay. And whose responsibility, how does it get on the ballot? Just curious for how that goes at the clerk?
The, the township board has the authority to place, uh, an item on the, on the ballot.
Yes.
Okay. Through this act?
Yes, so I believe the clerk's office will then send this down to the county clerk, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the resolution to extend the police and fire millage for the years of twenty-twenty-six through twenty-forty-five.
Support.
Supported by trustee Taylor. So, the motion is to approve the resolution to extend the police and fire millage for years twenty-twenty-six through twenty-forty-five. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Next up, Director Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, Honorable Board, how's everyone today?
Great.
Good. In front of you, um, we are, uh, looking to accept a grant from, uh, Eagle. This is a te- a community technical managerial and financial, we call it TMF grant. Um, this is, uh, in regards to doing lead service line investigations. Um, we applied for this grant in January. Um, this is a new program that the, uh, the state allocated funds, and they were only select, selecting approximately forty-eight communities across the state. Um, and so, when we applied, um, you could only get a maximum of six-hundred thousand dollars, so they could try to equit- equitably disperse it through the entire state. Um, so, we did apply for just under, uh, six-hundred thousand dollars. Um, they did make a slight change to our application, and it was reduced to five-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. This will be for investigations only, this isn't to replace any lines. Just a quick one-minute story is that we have approximately four thousand unknown service lines from records from nineteen-hundred and nineteen-forty, um, from homes built in that timeframe. And so, this will assist us to, to investigate some of those properties under the state's formulas. Um, this will allow us to probably somewhere around four hundred properties we'll be able to investigate, and they call potholing, where we're, um, we'll be hire a contractor, and they use a factor and then go down to verify what, what is connected as to service lines. Um, so, this is a, this is a great opportunity for us, because it is, these are funds that we were in need of, and it will allow us to, to accept it and then move forward with this, um, with this, this phase of the project. Um, so, I was looking for approval to accept this grant from Eagle, uh, in the amount of five-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Mike, if this is only going to cover four hundred, four hundred homes, are we responsible for the additional funds or are there other grants and opportunities for us to get money to cover those?
We are currently, our staff is also doing in- investigations, um, daily. Uh, we're going out and doing different areas. Um, there's, there's a formula, it's, uh, that the state's using called a CDSMI, um, and I couldn't tell what the acronym means off the top of my head, to be honest with you. But it allows us to use a formula under Eagle's, um, uh, system to formulate where an idea is, where the, where the trouble areas are. We also have a map, um, that lists where all these homes are at, that are unknown to us on our addresses, because everything from nineteen-fifties on, we do have a, a record of, and we have scanned all those records into a system. So, Venish, which is assisting us, um, has those records, and then we're looking at the subset of the ones that we're missing. So, on top of these four hundred, our staff is still doing them, and then we're hopefully, we've, we've applied for a, um, a loan to do a water main project in the, uh, the southeast corner of the township, and we've added two million dollars to do lead replacements and possibly to do more lead investigations. Um, that's being worked on as we're speaking. Uh, we were turned down for the, for the, um, the program twenty-twenty-two, but since we're currently in the, in the, the AL, the, um, uh, for the lead, um, that gives us more points for the system, which we're hopefully will, will, um, approve us for that, uh, for that program. We'll find out later this year on that, on that application for more funding.
Thank you.
Other questions?
To the chair. Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Mike?
Yes.
Director Dennis.
Yes.
Being that these homes are, some of them, well over a hundred years old, just from a layman's point of view, because a lot of this is Greek to me, could it, can you safely assume that these homes from nineteen-hundred to nineteen-forty are using lead service lines?
No. Um, that's why they're unknown, but one of the things that you can look at, from nineteen-hundred to nineteen-forty, they were using copper. From nineteen-forty for the war, they stopped using, because they're using copper for the war. They started using copper products. So, we're, we're going to target areas right now from the, um, early forties to about nineteen-forty-six. The homes that we know were built in that area to see what they contained, and then after the war ended, they went back to copper again. I just found that out from my engineer about two weeks ago.
Okay.
I d- I'd never thought about it.
So, not a stupid question, then?
That's, no, it's not.
Okay, okay.
He brought it, because we were talking about it, about randomness, he says, no, concentrate in that area first and then work your way backwards.
Okay. But we can't assume that they use copper on all of those old homes?
No, no, that's why we're going to do the problem.
You have to expect all four thousand homes?
Well, with the formula, the state will allow us to, um, use it, because we have an idea of where the homes were built off this map. So, we're doing this, this, you know, randomizer, as they're calling it, to see, okay, look at these different areas, and then you use this formula to say, hit tho- hit something here, here, and here, then that's meeting the state's mandate.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we kind of take...
So, basically, if there's copper here, there's copper here, copper here, out of twenty of the hundred homes, you can assume that the other homes are using copper?
Unknown, would that are considered unknown to us?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks, it's understanding a little better. To the chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
This being a reimbursement grant, um, what's the lag time between the time you submit your invoice and the time that they...
I would hold thirty to sixty days. They have, um, Supervisor may have saw today that they wanted to verify our address, because I thought, I'd give it to them, I did, and they, um, this is all going to be just like we do, you know, federal grants we've done. It's a, it's a, it's a quarterly report every, every, um, every few months. Uh, one of the things, too, I saw, this is also has to be Davis Bacon. Um, so, we'll be doing interviews with the contractors and things of that nature, since it is all, all federal money. But I would think they're, they're pretty good at thirty days.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we accept the technical grant from Eagle for lead service line investigation verification in the amount of five-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand dollars.
Five-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand.
Support.
Supported by trustee Jackson. So, the motion is to accept, the acceptance of technical grant from Eagle Lead Service Line Investigation Verification in the amount of five-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. Director Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, um, we have a two-parter here, uh, for the next two items. Um, this is our annual, um, um, bit that, that we come, your request that we come to the board. Um, this is a resolution approving the lawn cutting fees for twenty-twenty-four. This is for residential and commercial properties that are identified. Um, these are only for vacant properties, vacant homes and/or vacant lots. Uh, we do this yearly, um, and if they are not cut and they, um, and they are vacant and the property owners not take responsibility for them, Redford Township does cut them, we, we bill the property owner, and if they do not pay it, then it goes on to the taxes for the year. Um, and so, this is, we've been doing this process for, I want to say it's about year eight now. Um, so, it was our intention, um, to keep the fee the same as last year at a hundred-and-sixty-five dollars per cut. And, um, and we do, when it, when it starts off, we have ten, fifteen, then it grows. Um, I think any, yeah, we, we cut this, there, there is a schedule that we use, and we do, uh, anticipate to, to cut the grass approximately, um, during the summertime, we'll do it once a month, because we don't need to, to do it, um, July, we'll do it once July and August, and then we do it, uh, twice in September, twice in October for the leaves, uh, because we get a lot of phone calls for leaves, uh, twice in May and twice in June, so. Um, and so, then by the time we're done, there, there might be thirty to forty properties, but there are lots, and there are just vacant homes that the people are not maintaining, so. So, I was looking if, uh, if this board would approve the, the annual fee, uh, per cut of a hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, which is the same as last year.
Other questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Mike, do you have any idea what percentage of the people actually pay in, and then what has to go into the tax rolls?
Not a great deal of them will pay. Um, I would say probably thirty percent, roughly.
Thirty percent pay.
Yeah, thirty, forty percent pay. Yeah, because they're just, they're, they're just harder to reach, that's why they're cutting grass. We reach out, we send them letters, we, we, we update for the vacant homes, um, there, there are letters sent out. Every time we have a cut, we'll do it monthly, we send them the, the bill. Sometimes they come back, uh, there's no forwarding address, things of that nature. So, um, but I, I would say probably forty percent, and then, then the rest, we, we put on the taxes and, you know, we collect a fee that way.
Are there any other fees or fines imposed on this property before you get to you actually cutting it?
Uh, not if they're vacant, just to the fact that the, we, we know that there's no one who's going to take care of it, and so, we'll, we'll go through the process. If vacant lot, we don't, because there's, that, we just add them to the list, and it would, so we cut it, because if we just wait, 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 by the time we get to it, they're going to be a foot to eighteen inches tall. And at, at least it'll keep the, you know, the, our, our neighborhoods clean and, and out of the blight.
Thanks.
No problem.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee King.
I move approval of the resolution of lawn cutting service fees in the amount of a hundred-and-sixty-five dollars for two thousand twenty-four.
Support.
Supported. So, motion on the floor is to approve the, uh, resolution of lawn cutting service fees for twenty-twenty-four of a hundred-and-sixty-five dollars per cut. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Director Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, um, in front of you tonight is a memo requesting approval, um, for the contractor that would in turn cut these properties. Um, this is, uh, we, we went out for a, uh, RFP, and, uh, we, we did receive, um, six companies that did, uh, you know, submit their, their prices to cut properties. Um, they were very tight, uh, um, well, I shouldn't say they're, yeah, some were tight, we did have one that was, you know, ten times, um, the, uh, the, the lowest quote, but, uh, but other than that, they're, they were pretty close. Um, and, um, so, it was our recommendation, uh, to, um, to provide the contract, the law service, Law and Maintenance Services twenty-twenty-four contract to Parrot Landscaping, uh, from Clinton Township. Uh, there's a bid tabulation sheet on page two. Um, and if, if anybody does ask, um, you know, you know, Green Butler's has done in the past, they were the second, but if we do, um, they, they were four dollars higher, but there is a, a bid difference that we have in ordinance, but if I still went to the five percent, because they're red foundation based, they were still, so, I did like down that, that side as well, so. Um, but, uh, but it would be, Parrot Landscaping was the, the cheapest out of, uh, all the, all the properties or all the, all the landscape companies, and, um, we're, uh, we'll start putting together a list here in the next few weeks and start cutting grass, uh, early, early next month.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the bid recommendation for residential and commercial property law maintenance services twenty-twenty-four to Parrot Landscaping LL State. Support.
Moving support, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Director Dennis. Captain Mansfield.
Fewer stacks of paperwork than Director Dennis.
We'll work on that.
Yeah.
He can help you out with that. He can help you out.
Good evening, Honorable Board. I am here today to ask for your approval for an agreement with Clemis for a data conversion, um, program that we're putting in place. Back in twenty-nineteen, our police department contracted with Clemis as our new CAD system dispatch information, if you guys are familiar with that, and our report management software. Uh, the main reason we had done that at the time is the company we were using, OSSI, if you're familiar, had in fact been bought out, and the new company and the new owners came to us and said we had a couple of options. Uh, we could in fact pay for an initial conversion right at that moment, and it would cost We could in fact pay for an initial conversion right at that moment and it would cost approximately $200,000 to transfer that data into Clemis. We could continue using their CAD system at which they would never update anything, they would never touch it, and we would be at the whim of technology and when it would probably break. Or we could store it and have just an internal system. At the time, it was made more fiscal sense to just store it at our own place. As time moved on and technology has improved, the price came down and we are looking to transfer our old RMS data into Clemis, mostly for security measures, but also for some consistency, to make all of our data accessible through our new system so that we have our old cases, we have our old files, we have our own property records, all onto one place. What that cost includes is not only the conversion itself, but also the creation of a special algorithm, which is necessary to go from one software program into another. So that's what I'm asking for, is the approval of the agreement for $50,985 with Clemis to do this data conversion.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Is this going to be done internally or will there be an outside thing that comes in and actually does the data?
It will be Clemis specifically.
So Clemis specifically?
Yes, and they are creating their own algorithm. I'm hoping that they will get it started in the next couple of weeks with your approval.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move to approve $50,985 for the conversion of the Redford Township Police Department data into the Clemis system for security and consistency measures per the 2023 decision. This is a one-time fee funded from the Public Safety IT Contractual Services Budget.
Support.
Supported by Treasure Cavanaugh. So the motion is for approval of the $50,985 for conversion of the Redford Township Police Department data into the Clemis system for security and consistency measures per the 2023 decision. This is a one-time fee funded by, funded from the Public Safety IT Contractual Service Budget. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Captain.
Director Mancini.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, Honorable Board. I come before you today to get a bid recommendation approved for demolition of a property we purchased at a tax auction from 22 at 20521 Seminole. The property actually has two separate structures on it, a commercial property at 1,200 square feet and a small residential property about 630 square feet. We received bids for this demolition and the lowest qualified bidder was Universal Consolidated Enterprises out of Roseville. Their bid was for $37,969 and I'd like to get that approved. It'll be a site clearance SBS activity paid for by CDBG and then also for me to be able to sign the contract with the contractor.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasure Cavanaugh.
Director Mancini, sorry. Do we have more demolitions slated?
So right now, this is the only one that we have. Last year's tax auction, they were all for rehab, there wasn't really anything identified as demolition.
Okay, thank you.
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Director Mancini?
Yes.
Will these just be vacant lots that would be on sale or is there already something planned for this property?
Right now, there's nothing planned for the property. It is kind of a small lot, it's like 64 feet by 100 and it sits next to another property that doesn't have a lot of parking. It's a, I forget the name of the company, but it's a watch shop. The property that we're tearing down is on Grand River and Seminole, it's right in the corner, so it might make sense to talk to that business owner and see if he needs additional parking or something like that.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move for approval of the bid recommendation for the demolition of blighted property through the site clearance blight SBS program in the amount of $37,969.
Support.
So the motion is to approve the bid recommendation to demolition of blighted property through the site clearance blight SBS program in the amount of $37,969. Do we need to have the company in there as well? Yes, and Universal Consolidated Enterprises Incorporated.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I believe Director Mancini also needed to be listed as the person who could sign the contract.
Yeah, that's a technicality, but I think, because it's CDBG funds, but it's up here.
Okay, and in addition, that Director Mancini be the official signer of this contract from the township. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. So you're up for the next one?
Yep, I got one more item.
Okay.
So I have a request to appoint a new member to our CDBG Advisory Committee. This committee has a vacancy, one of the members asked not to renew. And Cheryl Klotz, who is a represt resident, obviously, a long time township employee who retired from Redford, has expressed interest in serving on that committee. So I'd like to ask you guys to approve her for a term ending March 31st, 2026, it's a two-year term. She did want me to share with you that she apologized, she couldn't make it tonight, she had an airport run to pick somebody up, so she wants to join us.
To the Chair.
Treasure Cavanaugh.
I can attest that Cheryl Klotz is dedicated, hard worker and always Redford first, so I'm so happy to see that she's engaged again. To the Chair.
Treasure Cavanaugh.
I continue.
Okay.
I move to approve Cheryl Klotz to the Community Development Lot Grant Advisory Committee for a term of two years expiring March 31st of 2026.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Taylor. Motion is approved. Approval of Cheryl Klotz to the Community Development Lot Grant Advisory Committee, CDBG, for a term of two years expiring March 31st, 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Announcements?
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Director Mancini. Announcements? Okay, well, I'll make it brief. Township business, we're looking for a new career, if you're looking for a new career, please review the employment page on the township website for job improvement opportunities. Current job positions include police officer, police dispatch, firefighter, entry level and lateral, police cadet, school crossing guard, airbus driver, full and part-time, chief mechanic, plumbing inspector, parks maintenance supervisor, seasonal marquee maintenance, secretary four, office administrator, marketing administrative assistant, senior accountant, and benefit supporting. So everybody knows that the five-mile bridge replacement project has been delayed and the project is tentatively scheduled to begin in the fall of 2024. Wayne County will provide updates when available. MDOT is to begin mobilization and resurfacing of Grand River Avenue between Five Points and Inkster. The project will run through fall of 2024. The approved contractor has been completed, the approved contractor has completed approximately 80% of the LED service line replacements per contract for phase, I guess it's one LSLR. The phase should be completed by June of 2024. We've hired two new employees in the water department and one new employee in the public works department. The other thing is, is that I want to, there it is. I want to take a moment because I thought the interim chief terms was going to be here, possibly tonight, and, okay, so I just want to make sure it's publicly, he's publicly recognized for being the interim chief here in Redford Township, helping us get through a lot of difficulties and helping to streamline things at the police department. We appreciate his service, we wish him well in his retirement, and that needed to be said. The other thing is, I want to make sure that everybody knows that promotion is requiring in ceremony for Jennifer Mansfield is chief, John Burris is captain, Emily Simmons captain, Edward Pickle? Pickle?
Pikel.
Pickle?
I call it.
Okay, okay, well, that's where I probably heard it. Lieutenant, Ryan Neal sergeant, Alan Reichenbach sergeant. And that will be this coming Monday, April the 15th of 2024 at 6:30, right over here at the marquee. Light refreshments will follow, please come and join us to celebrate the promotional opportunities for our officers here in Redford Township and show your support to them like we know they want to support all of us. Anything else from the township board? Hearing nothing, this means adjourned.